Good morning. We'll call the Pennington County Commission Meeting for March 1st, 2016 to order. Stand for a moment of silent reflection. Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Deb Hadcock.
Pledge of Allegiance. For the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, and free of sin, justice for all.
Next item is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they wish to make to the agenda? If not, do we have a motion?
I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
Motion in a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, answer the roll, please.
Buscud?
Aye.
Farabee?
Aye.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Peterson?
Yes, motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Commission Office Manager. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Number five is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 16th, 2016. Number six is the approval of the vouchers in the amount of $472,548. Number seven is to reappoint Paul Paulson, representing Area 3, to the Weed and Pest Board for a three-year term. And finally, number eight is to approve the Bridge Reinspection Program Resolution for the 2016 Bridge Inspection Program, as submitted by the Highway Department.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed?
Number six and eight to Mr. Chair.
Any others? If not, do we have a motion?
Reproval of the consenting calendar exception of six and eight.
Second?
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll answer the roll.
Buscud?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes, motion carried. Item six.
Once again, Mr. Chair, I pulled the items so we can vote on them separately. And I will say, I noticed that on our packet, there's any number of items that don't have a description of, as to what they're for. But I want to vote separately.
You what?
I want to vote on item number six, the vouchers, separately, and that's why I pulled it.
Are we ready to vote? All move approval?
Second?
Have a motion in a second. Discussion on the motion. Roll call.
Buscud?
Aye.
Farabee?
No.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes, motion carried. Item eight.
Mr. Chair, I've got a couple of questions for the Highway Superintendent, if he'd be
I'm Tom Willsey, County Highway Superintendent.
My first question was, what do you anticipate the total bill will be for this year?
The bill for us, for the Highway Department, we're anticipating around $3,500. That's been pretty much the average for the last five years.
Thirty-five hundred to thirty-five thousand?
Thirty-five hundred, $3,500. This has varied from $2,600 to $8,600. So it's, I just said the average for the five years has been that.
That's our total bill?
That's our bill. The total, the state pays 80 percent, we pay 20 percent of the inspections. Our portion averages $3,500.
We chatted briefly yesterday, Mr. Chair, and we're changing inspectors this year, right?
That is correct. I'm going with Bros Engineering instead of Interstate. I was not totally satisfied with what I was getting from Interstate, so. I have experience with Bros, so I'm going with somebody I know.
They don't anticipate any more surprises like baseline?
Well, what they find, they find. I can't, I don't know what, what they will find.
That, to me, still is kind of shocking from...
Would you speak into your microphone, please?
The baseline road from a 50,000, 50-ton truck to, not even a passenger vehicle, was in two years' time, was quite dramatic. And along those lines, is there any way that the highway foreman and their crews can apply a little common sense and look at all those bridges in their spare time, in the summertime?
That is what we hire the engineers for, is to look them over and analyze them. We don't have the, we don't have the people there with the expertise to do that.
We, most of those type of people have a little common sense. And we've got four districts, 130, what, 135 bridges?
Somewhere like that.
Divided up four ways, that's 35 to 40 bridges per each. Anyway, just a thought, that sometimes the little farm boys that run some of the equipment can see things that an engineer can't see. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment?
Yes.
If we were to hire someone to be on staff to inspect, it would certainly cost the county more than $3,500.
Oh, definitely.
But I think the key for me to understand is that we do have to be very sure that we're doing it the right way, and we need to have an expert do it. So, I mean, we have budgeting coming up. If Mr. Farabee thinks that we should hire someone, then that might be something we should direct the Highway Department to do, is looking to how much that would cost to have an engineer on staff, so that we would be protected from liability if there's a problem with the bridge.
The engineer that we would have to hire would have to be certified in bridge inspections to cover ourselves that way. And you're talking 60,000, 50,000?
Okay.
To get an engineer that's certified and experienced? That's why we hire these companies, to do it, because they have the people on staff.
Okay.
Anything further? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the Bridge Reinspection Program Resolution for the 2016 Bridge Inspection, as submitted.
Second?
Second.
Motion in two seconds.
Thank you, Tom.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Buscud?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes, motion carried. Next item is the presentation of Adopt a Highway Program Certificates, Connie Bertolato.
Good morning. As Chairman says, I'm Connie Bertolato. I'm an Administrative Assistant at the Highway Department. I'm here this morning to recognize our Adopt a Highway groups. We had a great group last year in 2015. We had 50 organizations participate, and they cleaned up trash 112.12 miles of county roads. So we had a really great year last year. Twelve of those groups are here this morning to receive certificates of appreciation from us for doing that work. The remainder of the groups will receive their certificates in the mail. I'll mail those to them today. So with that, I'll start with our groups. The first group is the 28th Logistics Readiness Squadron. Next group, 28th Security Forces Squadron, Alpha Flight. Cub Scout Pack 74. Ellsworth Air Force Base Group 56. Hart Ranch Camping Resort Club. Bayetta Sigma, South Dakota School of Mines and Technology. South Dakota School of Mines and Technology, American Indian Science and Engineering Society. South Dakota School of Mines and Technology, ASME. The Lone Rangers 4-H Club. United Blood Services.
Thank you all for your service. Thank you, Connie.
That's pretty awesome, the diversity we had, from 4-H Clubs to college to military. That's pretty awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
No County Commissioners, so.
I did wrap the city. I've been on the Rapid City Crew. We've just signed you up, Lindell. You volunteered.
You don't pick up the trash in your ditches?
Okay, item 10. And we have Alan Schaefer here, from Legislative Audit.
Didn't we see him last year?
You did. I'm Al Schaefer with Department Legislative Audit. Actually, Bruce is supposed to be here. He's the auditor in charge this year, but he couldn't make it down here today, so you got me instead. But we're here to inform you that we're here, we started the routine audit for Pennington County for the calendar year 2015, and it's what we call our Fiscal and Compliance Audit, where we not only look at the financial statements of the county for that calendar year, but we also look at select laws, and we also test compliance with federal grants in accordance with OMB Circular A133. So we have to issue a report on your grants and stuff, too. In the letter again this year, it talks about, that talks about doing something with the Regional Services Center. We decided last year that that wasn't needed anymore. And so what we're, it's in the letter again this year by mistake. What we'll do is issue an addendum like we did last year and have Julie sign it, saying that we aren't doing anything with Juvenile Service Center, other than our normal routine audit. We used to throw in an extra schedule of expenditures for that when there was, when the original juvenile detention regional group was established and stuff, and nobody missed it last year, so I don't think there's any need for it again either. So we'll, we'll do that addendum again, just to make sure and get everything straight and stuff. Did you have requested us to help with the notes to the financial statements and schedule of federal funds? But actually, we won't have to help with the schedule of federal funds. Cindy got that done yesterday and turned it over to us, so she did that on, but we may end up helping with notes to the financial statements, just to get it done before the end of the audit and stuff, with timing purposes and stuff. So other than that, usually KJ gets it done for us beforehand, so, but we may end up having some help with that. One of your responsibilities as Commissioners or management is to design and implement a program to make sure that, you know, to detect or fraud or abuse going on in the county. And it's also your responsibility to inform us if you know of any suspected fraud or abuse going on in the county. Free, feel, feel free, there we go, to come up and visit with us anytime if you want. We're working in the Auditor's Office. And even if you just want, you have some concerns or questions that you have, you're, you know, we're up there to help out and answer any questions you may have, just feel free to come up and visit with us or not. But, you know, if you know of anything, just let us know about that and hit a letter date or whatever, too, so. And that engagement letter also kind of details other management responsibilities and what our responsibilities are as auditors and stuff. You can kind of read through that, and if you guys have any questions, you know, you can come and talk to us. Our billable rate is $63.50 per billable hour. And when we say billable hour, while we're here, we write some time off to assistants, either answering questions for KJ, Julie, or Janet, or any other department head, or else we'll get emails or calls from other entities that we answer questions to, and we charge that off to assistants, so you guys don't get billed for that. Do you guys have any specific areas or concerns that you want us to look at that might not be covered in a routine audit? Anything right offhand now that you know of?
Any questions for Alan?
Okay. Of course, we'll be back again after we're done with the audit, to meet with you guys again, to tell you about any audit findings we may have. If something significant would come up, in the meantime, we'd also let you guys know if something like that would happen, too. But other than that, that's, unless you guys have, anybody has questions or not, but that's, we're set to go with this one, and the only thing we have, that you have authorized this Chairman to sign our engagement letter, and we'll get a copy of that after it's signed and stuff, and put it in our files, and go forth.
Thank you, sir. And thank you to Cindy for doing our federal funds. We appreciate that and all the work the Auditor's Office has to do to get this ready to go. They're very efficient, so we appreciate them a lot as well. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can you run by that Juvenile Detention Center or Service Center one more time?
What we used to do is through, what we did was that we specifically pulled a sample of revenues and expenditures for just the Juvenile Services Center and audited them, and then we threw a schedule in the audit report that showed the revenues and the expenses just for the Juvenile Services Center. And that was more for that when you had the joint venture with all the other counties, which you kind of still have, but, you know, there's a little bit, it's done a little bit differently, so the financial reporting is a little different on it. And, you know, it was kind of a thing that was thrown in there just for the other counties, but I don't think anybody ever looked at it and stuff. And it took us about 12, you know, 12 to 15 hours to do that stuff. And we normally, in our normal auditing, we will pull vouchers or receipts and stuff from the Juvenile Services Center. It's not like we're not, we're ignoring them completely. They still fall out in our samples and stuff, so we look at their procedures and stuff out there, and their transactions, too. So it's just that we did a little bit more concentrated effort on those and put, to put that schedule in there.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Alan?
Thanks, Alan.
If not, then thank you, thank you, Alan. And do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to authorize your signature on the letter of engagement for the annual audit.
Second?
Motion in a second. Discussion on the motion. Roll call.
Buscud?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Hadcock?
Yes.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes, motion carried. Thank you. Next item is the County Care's Presentation, Online Property Tax System and Elderly and Disabled Assessment Freeze. Treasurer Janet Saylor.
Good morning. Janet Saylor, Pennington County Treasurer. This morning, we're going to give you some information on the assessment freeze for the elderly and the disabled. What the program does is, the freeze on, it freezes the assessment. We have an alcohol or something.
It's an alien.
Hey. Just kidding. Can we do it off the mic?
I don't know if pilot's gone on.
Yeah, well.
He'll fix it. You don't want to hear yourself twice, Janet.
Can we do it off the mic? No? We can do it off the mic. Is this one?
You're fine.
Okay. The freeze, what the freeze does is it freezes the assessment, the assessment on the property, and it prevents the homeowner's assessment from increasing in value for tax purposes. This means that if the value of the home increases, the homeowner will pay tax on the former assessed lower value of the year that they qualified. The property is defined as a house, garage, and the lot upon which it sits, or on one acre, whichever is less. Qualifications in the program does not freeze your taxes. It freezes the assessment amount of the home. And changes in tax levies still fluctuate as your annual tax amount, on your annual tax amount that's owed. To be eligible for the program for 2016, taxes payable in 2017, the following criteria must be met. You must be 65 years of age or older, or disabled, as defined by the Social Security Act. You must own your home or retain a life estate in the property. An unmarried widow, widowers of persons previously qualified may still qualify in some circumstances. You must have resided for at least 200 days of the previous calendar year in a single-family dwelling. Your income and property value limits apply. For a single-member household, one person, income is $27,423.54 for 2015. Multiple is income less than $34,279.42 in 2015. The property valuation limit of the full and true market value is $188,240.34, which would make you ineligible for that program. To apply, applicants are available online through the state at www.dor.st.gov, or at any County Treasurer's office beginning January of each year. And applications must be submitted annually to the County Treasurer on or before April My next presentation is on, I'm sorry, I did put the applications on here, but if anyone would hear this and call our office at 394-2163, we would be more than happy if they don't have a computer to mail that out to them. Also, for your information, anyone that applied last year, got an application in the mail January 1st of this year, and everyone who hasn't applied has been called once, and may even be called a second time before the 1st of April, as time permits by my staff. The Treasurer's Office offers online property tax payment also, that was put together by our IT Department. We've made a few changes to this, but for the most part, it seems to work very, very well. We are getting more people every day that are paying property taxes online. It's pretty simple. If you go to our www.penco.org and click on Treasurer's Office, Pay Property Taxes, and follow the steps that are laid out, payments submitted before midnight will be included in that date's payments. All other payments go on the next day. And payments sometimes take three to four days to reflect your property taxes on our system. There is a charge. If you write us a bad check, the fee is $40. And for any return payments, you enter a card, a credit card, or a bank, your bank account number. Sometimes people have put in the wrong accounts, and they've been denied. And at that point, if it's the last day of April, they're considered unpaid, and interest does become due. We work through Paymentis Corporation in processing our tax line payments for Pennington County. There is a processing fee for their services. E-checks, if you put in your check, it's $1.95. But for credit cards or debit card, it's a 2.5 percent. That's the payment that they get. None of that money goes to Pennington County. We don't accept, payments over $25,000 are not accepted online. So if someone has a lot, and they're over $25,000, we do not accept those online. If you go into, you click on your view of your pay property taxes, you can put it in by your tax ID number, or the owner's name. It's pretty simple. And it will bring up, if you have your tax ID number, it brings up your address, it tells the subdivision you're in, it's first half due, second half due, if there's any interest. Delinquent? My taxes aren't delinquent. Imagine that. And anything, anyone that would be over 70 that is not advertised in the paper, would not, it would not show up that their, their taxes are delinquent either. So if you have any questions on this, I'd be happy to answer them, or any of the public that has any questions, they can call our office at 394-2163. I don't know, the 71's not correct.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Janet, do they do special, can you pay special assessments online as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, if they're due, if the county has them. Now, there's more than one special. You know, there's a stormwater special that's included in your taxes, but if you've got a notice from the city that you owe a special assessment at the city, until they become delinquent, they do not come to Pennington County.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Janet, can you tell me, if they're over 70 and they're delinquent, do you send some type of notice, or because it's not in the newspaper, how do they?
We don't advertise anyone over 70 that's in the law. We cannot sell a certificate, nor can we advertise to them. They would get a delinquent notice in November.
They're still noticed.
Yes.
I was just wondering if...
We just can't, we cannot advertise them.
Okay, well, I'm not, that's a good thing, but I just wondered if they had something else.
And we cannot take their home.
Okay. Thanks.
Would you clarify for me again, the application deadline for the assessment freeze, is that April 1st?
April 1st.
And again, do they have to renew that application every year?
Every year.
Okay.
Because of the income changes every year.
I think that's something that...
And the, the amount of income goes up every year, depending on the CPI. Now, it didn't go up...
Yeah, it'll look closer to the mic.
The income goes up every year. That's why they have to apply every year, George. But the amount of income did not change this year, because the CPI did not change. So the income amounts are still the same that they were last year.
We have a question in the back.
Yes, I just noticed on the screen, I think that's a long time ago.
It is. That's why, that's why I repeated the number. It is the 394-2163.
You said something just a minute ago, you can't take their home if they're over 70, meaning if they don't pay their taxes for three years, it doesn't go on the tax when they sell the properties and stuff?
That's correct. You cannot take a person's home that's over 70 years old.
Okay, that's, I didn't know that.
Even if they don't pay their taxes for 20 years. You'll eventually get the taxes, once the, if there's an estate, once the estate is settled or the home is sold, but you cannot take their property.
Thank you. George?
You're not 70, forget it, Deb.
You're safe at 70, George. How old are you?
59.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet.
I missed it, too.
Okay, our next item is item 12, Rapid City Public Library Update.
Good morning, Commissioners.
So in approach.
I'll let, I'll let them do the report, but I'm Jessica Olson.
You can move the mic around to... You can move the mic around to.
Is it this one? I'm Jessica Olson, I'm the board chair.
Hi, Jim McShane, Director, Rapid City Public Library, good morning. Let's see. I assume you have our report in front of you.
Yes, we do.
It's supposed to be the annual. Uh, it's listed in the, uh, agenda as being for July through September, as well as the annual. This is just the annual. And, um, do we want to go over any highlights?
I'll have Sean go over the highlights, so we all have something to do.
All right, um, so the, probably the biggest highlights on there are the, um, digital downloads increasing this year. So we've seen Pennington County users really start to take, really start to take, uh, more interest in our online offerings, probably because it's more convenient. We're also offering some new services, uh, coming up in 2016. We're gonna have board game checkouts, video games, and then items like, uh, knitting needles, and some like hands-on materials that people can take home and use, uh, largely for, uh, training or class purposes. Uh, we do a lot of hands-on training at the library, and we're, we started that in 2015, and we're continuing it due to the demand that we've seen from the public. Um, the other things that I think you might be interested on there, uh, circulations remain pretty steady. We are still seeing, uh, physical circulations go down, but that's being taken over by the, the digital, so. Does anyone have any questions about the report, anything on there I can help clarify?
Does, I, okay. So, one thing I just wanted to mention, um, we do have an opening for the county liaison. So I just wanted to remind you of that, if you guys want to take that into consideration and pick someone, we'd, happy to have someone come each month.
You can notify us too, and then one of us will be there, and be nice for people also on the board to see what you do, so.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Looking at your printout, um, the green line on the second page, um, other digital use. Would you characterize that for me?
Sure, so, the dashed lines, that represents all of Pennington County use. The green line that's solid, uh, that would be Rapid City and non-Pennington County use of materials. So it's, it's similar to the, um, Pennington County use, in that it's going up as we see the physical materials go down. Digital use of online materials itself is going up. It's just a comparison.
I'm unacquainted enough with that world, that I don't know what you mean by digital use.
So digital use would be, um, downloading an ebook from someplace like Amazon, um, which we have access to, or, um, well, Overdrive. We've got a couple of other databases that you can download, uh, books from. We've also got movies that you can stream from home, and we've got audiobooks that you can stream from home. Um, I believe we still have access to a few magazines as well, so it's just online use of materials.
And the, the blue and the red lines are going down while the green is going up.
Yeah. Uh, largely due to people, I think, um, wanting the convenience of being able to check out something from home without having to come down to the library. We still have a large amount of use of our physical collection, but by comparison, um, you know, we've got about a hundred and fifty thousand items in our physical collection of books, movies, audiobooks, things like that, and about two-hundred-and-sixty thousand digital items. So we've got more stuff available online, people are going there and finding it faster.
Mr. Chair, to head on to what you were saying, I, I'm probably about in the same dinosaur range as you are with this stuff, but this is, digital is anywhere, and not just physically over there at the, on Quincy Street, or, it's anywhere.
It's anywhere as long as you have your library card.
So that's, okay.
I think an, uh, an easy comparison is, if you were used to going to the library and you'd get a book, or you'd check out a movie, now you can go online to our website and, and check out a book just on your computer, and cha, and watch a movie just on your computer. So we have two-hundred-and-sixty thousand options there, and about a hundred and fifty thousand that you can actually hold in your hand.
Any idea of rough breakout of how much is physically at the library, and how much is in somebody's tractor going around the field, or?
You mean how much is checked out at any given time?
Of the digital, how much is, how much is physically, physically in Rapid, in the library?
Oh.
The breakout.
Like the use in the library? I don't know that we've ever looked at that statistic, we may not have a way to get it either. Um, the statistics that we get for digital use are from our vendors, so, Amazon, Overdrive, um, Hoopla.
Can you just clarify one more time what comparison you're asking for?
This line represents, uh, let's see, ten thousand, a hundred thousand, something or other, it doesn't say what that hundred thousand is, but, but whatever unit of measurement that is, of that hundred thousand for Pennington County digital use, how much is in the library, and how much is someplace else? At home, or in the tractor, or, you know.
I don't think that we have a way of determining that, because they're checked out from online. So people can do it in the library if they come down and connect to our network, or if they have their own, um, mobile internet through a phone, or something like that.
Or are you asking hard copy versus online copy?
No, 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 digital usage.
Does, digital usage only?
That's, that's.
Within digital usage, are they doing it from their home or from the library?
Right. Right.
Yeah, I'm, unfortunately, we don't have the ability to get that.
I think that would create some privacy issues, because you'd probably have to track that by their IP address, I'm guessing. And I'm just not sure we could dive into that, other than to track our own.
I know I have, um, I know this is circumstantial, but I've seen people come in, usually when they're looking to get help with a new device, like a Kindle, or something like that, and they're not sure how to use it. And they'll check out materials while they're in the library. But most people don't do that unless they, uh, don't have internet at their house, so.
So I think it'd be fair to assume most of it is happening in their homes, not at the library.
In years, it could, the library could be empty, and the digital use could be out of sight. So that's what you're saying?
Yeah.
We hope that never is the case?
Well, well, I mean, but, but that.
If it's, it's coming, it's a ways away, because we're, we still have about a thousand people coming through the doors every day.
Well, I understand, but, hey, I guess I'd be curious as to, certainly these folks that know all about the IT could come up with a program that wouldn't be intrusive on, on personal knowledge, or personal, uh, information, to give us a rough breakout as to how much of it's digital. I mean, at, at home, and, or out, wherever, versus in the library. Uh, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, thank you, guys, um, at the library. You probably have met the little kids that I hang around with, they're probably there every other day. So I appreciate how you guys take care of them, because they love the library. And they live in Hill City now, but they still come down to the library all the time, so, um, they love it. So I appreciate that.
Thanks for sending them there.
And, and, Mr. Chair, I might have.
Might not thank me later.
I might, we're, we're okay now for funding for, for a while, there's no, no more alarm bells going off for funding.
Um, as far as coming to the meetings, do you want us to email you when those are?
Email Holly.
Holly, okay, great.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I think that'll keep you posted on some of the fun things we're doing next.
Just send a notice to Commissioner Hancock, she, she needs the library presence and.
He's thinking I need to read more books.
Well, thank you.
Osmosis, bark it all over there.
Just try it, George. We're up to anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is item thirteen, Central State's Fair Audit Report.
Good morning, Mr. Commissioner, and, uh, members of the commission. I'm Ron Jeffries, General Manager for Central State's Fair and the Black Hills Stock Show. Uh, first off, I wanted to just report to you that we had a, a super, super stock show this year. It just seems like the harder we work, the luckier we get. Um, we had just great attendance throughout, a number of growth in our events and activities, so we're very pleased with it. That stock show was not part of this audit. So, uh, the audit was conducted by Cale Thorsonson, uh, they do this annually for us. Uh, the oc, the, uh, year is October first through September thirtieth. Uh, we again received an unqualified audit, which meant there was no reservations in our, uh, uh, financials. Uh, I'm gonna start with, um, just to point out a couple of things, and that's, uh, to say that we are about a three-point-three to three-point-four million dollar budget. Um, we do carry, if you're on page three, and I think you have a copy of it, but if you're on page three, you'll notice that, uh, we ended up total current assets of five-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, and liabilities of a hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, which means we have about four-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars cash. That equals about thirteen percent of our annual operating budget, which is fairly close to what the commission operates on. I think the goal for the commission's usually been about a twelve percent, uh, reserve. And that, uh, was established by our board as an emergency fund, in hopes that we would never have to be in front of the commission again, after a bad year, looking for financial support, just to stay in business. Um, so I'm very proud of the fact that the board has worked hard at getting that number put together and maintain that, and still able to operate, uh, the events and activities that we do. Uh, when you turn to page, uh, five, a couple of things, when you look at cash flows from our operations for the year, uh, and that's just, uh, events hosted, and, um, revenues and expenses, we had a positive cash flow of about a hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars. During the course of the year, we spent about a hundred-and-ninety-three thousand dollars on the Pennington County Fairgrounds property and equipment. And I did bring with me a copy of that breakdown that I will, that I'll leave with Holly for you to look at, so you can see where that hundred-and-ninety-three thousand went. Uh, a number of things, every, anything from asphalt to concrete, to lighting, to enclosing barns. Of that hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, sixty-eight thousand of that was then submitted to Pennington County for reimbursement. So the monies that were submitted to Pennington County for improvements for building projects was, uh, was sixty-eight thousand. Uh, the balance of the hundred-and-thirty thousand was paid for either by Central State's Fair, or by the Central State's Fair Foundation. Uh, foundation contributed on a number of projects, and those are outlined in the detail here that I'll, I'll leave with Holly. A couple other notes, um, one is that our total budget's about a hundred-and-forty-five thousand for repairs and maintenance on the buildings for this year. And, uh, just a couple of, a couple of notes, uh, our utilities for the grounds, not counting the event center, runs about seventy thousand a year. The event center utilities run about a hundred thousand a year. Uh, insurance runs anywhere from sixty to seventy thousand dollars a year. And portions of those are what, uh, part of that support from Pennington County is used for, including, excuse me, including the maintenance, uh, what we call the paints, board, and nails, which don't show up as capital projects, but they show up as, as maintaining the fairgrounds. Mowing the grass, watering the trees, um, painting, scraping, and, and, um, minor upkeep, I would call it. With that, I will open up and ask if anybody has any questions.
Just to clarify, in the beginning, you indicated that this audit report did not show the current stock show.
Correct.
It does show last year's.
The previous stock show, correct.
That's because of the timing of your.
Of our fiscal year, of our fiscal year, right.
So this, this year's stock show will be in next year's.
In next year's report, correct.
Yeah.
You know, I will mention that, just two things. One, um, in the, in the course of our operations, we contribute somewhere around a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars each year to other entities that need space, or, uh, services, or, or sometimes donations, um, for other nonprofit organizations. Everything from the police and sheriff's department, to fire department, to 4H, uh, to American Heart Association, whatever they might be, um, needing space to operate, uh, the, uh, Women's Auxiliary Book Sale is one that's coming up, the Rapid City Garden Club. A number of those organizations utilize the fairgrounds, uh, at a greatly reduced or no fee. And, uh, that total donation from Central State's Fair, we kind of track that, runs about a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars a year. Which is, um, we're pretty proud of that number, to be a nonprofit, and to still be able to provide that kind of support for the balance of the community is, is, uh, noteworthy.
So George, did you see, he looked at me, said, when he said, "Women's Book Club"?
And that's coming up.
Book, he said, "Book Club".
Uh, one other note, um, the annual meeting for Central State's Fair membership is Monday, March twenty-eighth, at, uh, six PM. Uh, the membership is open to anyone, uh, in Pennington County, well, actually, it's not subject to just Pennington County, its membership is open, uh, worldwide. It's a ten-dollar membership, and that does allow you to come to our annual meeting. You'll receive, uh, email notifications and newsletters. If you're eighteen, it does, uh, give you voting rights at the annual meeting to help us select board of directors, and of course, put you in our, uh, potential volunteer database. So, uh, we invite you to please attend if you can. Any other questions, I'd be willing to answer.
Mr. Chair, before he leaves, that page, page five, you, you said that the hundred-and-ninety-three thousand for property equipment through 2015, about sixty-eight was from us, from Pennington County.
Correct. Of the, um, each year, Pennington County are, uh, gives us about a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars from the budget.
The sixty-eights above and beyond that.
No, this was part of that hundred-and-eighty thousand. So of that hundred-and-eighty thousand, sixty-eight thousand, we requested reimbursement for capital improvements on the grounds. The, the balance of that hundred-and-ninety-three, Central State's Fair or Central State's Fair Foundation paid for. The balance of the hundred-and-eighty thousand, the, um, uh, a hundred, a hundred-and-twelve thousand was used for by paint, gas, oil, nails, water, maintenance of the grounds themselves.
Would you comment on your utilization of work release?
Sure. We do have an agreement with the South Dakota Department of Corrections, and we utilize Department of Corrections volunteers, um, in the maintenance of the fairgrounds facilities. Um, it's a absolutely fantastic program for us, saves us, uh, hundreds of thousands of dollars, I think if you put the man-hours into it. We have volunteers that work seven days a week, or we have volunteers every day of the week that are supervised by our maintenance crew, and by our staff. Uh, they, they were, for instance, um, completely responsible for the entire remodeling of the Bridger Steel Pavilion. Uh, Bridger Steel provided us with the steel for that project. And then, um, our, uh, full-time maintenance staff did not participate in the reconstruction of that building. That was entirely DOC volunteers. Um, they help us clean stalls, they set, uh, panels for events, uh, clean the yard, mow, water, uh, just about anything we have for construction. They put new roofs on the, um, Knights of Columbus Building, the Bray Arena, the Rounds Arena, the Bray Arena bathrooms, all this last year, and the, uh, Sule, uh, kitchen area, um, all this last year. So, we utilize them extensively, it's a good project for us, and we hope we're helping them, uh, keep their skills up and learn responsibilities to make good citizen choices when they're released. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, we'll move on to item fourteen. Petition to reduce the speed limit on Dunsmore Road. Identify yourselves when you come up, please.
Is that Fireman Bill Knight? I don't think you ever retired from being a fireman, do you?
Oh, you don't. Good morning, Commissioners, Bill Knight, and my wife Sally Knight. And what you see is not exactly, not totally what we want to do for Cary Drive, where we, uh, Dunsmore Road where we live at. We'd, uh, be nice if we could, could reduce the speed limit, but would, what we want is want to slow the people down that are using it now. The speed limit is currently thirty-five. The average speed is probably fifty or more. Reason being, aside from the normal stuff, in a hurry, go to work, et cetera, et cetera, we live in a series of hills, starting from Sharon Lake Road to the north of where we live. It's about a quarter mile to the next, next intersection of Cary Drive, and it goes downhill. Then it comes up to the hill, and goes down to a shorter hill, yet steeper, then up the hill again, and then around the curve. It's a great speedway. We have carloads of young adults, teenagers, that come by, not on a daily basis, but they come by. It's a thrill ride, and they'll come by back and forth several times. And then, of course, in the mornings and the afternoons, we have the normal work traffic. We have a lot of wildlife in the, in the, uh, dip part of the hill where we live at. I mean, uh, tons of deer, and hundreds of turkeys on a daily basis. People don't slow down very much, they honk the horn, step in the gas, and hope they miss them. Now, Commissioner Hancock knows me, she knows my concern about safety, doesn't include just fire. We have people that jog, walk, and bicycle every day on the hill. If they use the, walk along the road. If they use, walk along the road correctly, it's a blind hill on the one side. People are often in the middle of the road coming up the hill. This has been going on for years. We've had the sheriff's department out there put up their speed limit sign, and that helps somewhat others try to see how fast they get the numbers, how high they get the numbers to go when they see the sign. The deputy told us we received a report on how that looked, we've never seen a thing. No fault to, we're not faulting the deputy, we just haven't seen it. I've asked the sheriff's department on several occasions and given them permission, sit in my driveway. You will get several citations. Every time they've said they don't have the manpower, we know they're busy, we know this is not a major concern, yet a half a mile down from us on Sharon Lake Road, they've been there quite frequently, and we appreciate that. And they get quite a few. So we're asking if we can find a way to slow the traffic down, not only maybe with reduction of speed limit, but maybe speed bumps, speed cushions, which is a device that is wide enough for the normal base cars to slow the cars down, but narrow enough to allow emergency vehicles like fire apparatus to go over them without any impedance. We're asking for any ideas or suggestions, and I strongly suggest, if you could, to come out there and drive the hill and see what I'm talking about, you get a feel for why they do it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Have you visited with the highway department?
No, I haven't. No, I was directed to come this direction. We went through law enforcement, they directed us to come here.
Okay, because I think it would be important to get some feedback, you know, we can do some traffic counts, we can keep track of how fast people are going, we can do some studies, and that would help us determine what's the best way to go.
I agree, their expertise would be greatly appreciated and helpful.
Do we have to have a motion or something to look at? What do you usually do for, to start a study? Or maybe he already has. Tom? Thank you, sir.
We have not started a study on this yet. If you want us to, we can set out traffic counters, get speeds, get counts, that'd be the start of everything.
When are we putting that light up, Tom?
That, hopefully soon. We just got the set of plans to review on Dunsmore and Sharon Lake, so hopefully we'll be within a month, we'll start the process.
So it'd be the pretty good timing, I think, now, since we're putting the light up, and then we can look at the road, since we're in that area in a sense.
Yeah, we've done counts and everything, but it's further up the hill is where we've done it before. We have not done any down in that area.
So, Mr. Chair, do you want a motion from us to, or can we just agree? Do you need a motion from us?
I don't need a motion, thank you. I will start working on it. I'll get some tra, I'll start with the traffic counts and get some speeds and find out what we've got there.
And then Bill.
And we'll go from there.
We'll give you Tom's number, that way you can.
I think everybody's got my number.
That's true. That way you know we're following through and he's following through.
That would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah.
We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, next item is item 15.
Good morning, KJ Peterson, Chief Deputy Auditor. We only have one agenda item today, it's for a new retail on sale liquor license with Sunday sales for the Caputa store located at 15350 East Highway 44 in Caputa. This has been submitted to both the sheriff's office and the planning department for review and comments that were submitted under separate cover, and.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Second. All I need.
Motion and a second. Would you have anything further you want to say?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yeah.
We're allowed X amount of liquor license in the county, do you know how many we're allowed and how many this makes now?
Thanks to Vicki, I do. She must have, she must have been prepared for you, Ron. We currently have five licenses available in the county, and of course, those licenses are based by class on their location to the closest municipality. Class one at 250,000 in closest to Rapid City, Buck's Elder, and Blackhawk, and the two and threes at 25,000 for closest proximity to Hill City, Wall Keystone, Caputa, Quinn, Rochford, New Underwood, and Wasta.
Okay, thanks, KJ.
Any other questions or comments for KJ? We do have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Buscud?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes, motion carried. Thank you, KJ. Okay, your next item is item 16.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mark Vargo, Pennington County State's Attorney. I'm coming to you because a victim, Director of Victims Assistance has unique rights under our statutes. In other words, we have a position for a victim witness coordinator, but unless we formally designate that person as our Director of Victims Assistance, that person cannot be, for instance, in the grand jury with a victim while they're testifying at the grand jury. And so Sharon Callamine, who as I'm sure all of you know from her long service to Pennington County, she's been here over 25 years, will be retiring effective April 1st. And Tracy Dolson Decker, who has been an attorney with the office and a prosecutor, has decided that her true passion is in the victim part of what it is that we do, applied for, and we hired her to replace Sharon as our victim witness coordinator. So really, what I'm asking for from the commission is simply a designation that will go into her file, that will enable her to have all of the statutory rights that come with being the Director of Victims Assistance.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Tracy Dolson Decker to be the Victims Assistant Director for Pennington County.
Second.
What you need?
Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, roll call.
Buscud?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes, motion carried. Good job.
Thank you all, and I will remind you that we'll be celebrating Sharon's career, and we'll make sure that that gets into the county email system so that everybody can come by and tell her thanks.
That's pretty awesome, 25 years.
It is, and the changes that have been undergone in victim services over that timeframe that she's had to adjust to and deal with have been truly extraordinary, and we'll be sad to see her go, but we're very confident that we have somebody who's capable of dealing with the next set of changes. So thank you all.
Mr. Chair, I would have one question, is this any term on this thing or just indefinite?
This is indefinite, until otherwise stated by the commission or myself. It's old enough that we couldn't find Sharon's appointment, we know it happened, but we couldn't find the language, so we had to recreate the form, which is why we turn to jail all the time.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item is item 17.
Good morning, Commissioner Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. You have a couple lists of abatement requests. This is what I introduced last week as this bunch of them that comes before you. They're on two agenda items for, I don't think, any reason other than how they came in through the auditor's office. They are pretty self-explanatory.
So, Mr. Chair, can we make, do we have to make two motions or one?
I don't know why you would have to make two.
Okay.
Unless somebody wanted to talk about them separately, maybe, but.
Yeah.
If we have a motion, then we can, in discussion, if you do have questions about either one or both, that could happen.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve both lists of abatements as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, roll call.
Buscud?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes, motion carried. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you. Look for this again over the next couple of meetings, you can see from this list, it says Rapid City. I think they were organized by what local board they went to first, so there'll be more of them in the future.
Okay.
We'll look forward to seeing you again. Okay, the next item is item 18, Highway Department.
First item, 18A, is for our bid letting for the annual supplies. I attached the tabulations for the items that were bid on February 11th as authorized by the commission. We have reviewed the numbers and contracts are to be awarded as follows, and in order to make the award process, we have listed the motion based on our award recommendations. First item is for aggregate materials. The award AS 21601 for aggregate materials, we're splitting it, item number one, three-inch ballast, limestone to Pete Lean and Sons of Rapid City and tally construction of Hill City based on locations where it's needed. 216, 2000, AS 21601, aggregate materials. Number two is one-inch base coarse material to Pete Lean and Sons of Rapid City and tally construction of Hill City based on the locations needed. Aggregate materials, Rapid City area, item number three, three-quarter inch base coarse aggregate material to Pete Lean and Sons and tally construction based on locations. Aggregate materials, type 2A, bituminous surface treatment aggregate material to Pete Lean and Sons, that is chip seals that we use when we do, chips when we do chip seals. Aggregate materials, number six, three-quarter inch gravel cushion aggregate material to Pete Lean and Sons of Rapid City. Aggregate materials, number seven, three-quarter inch gravel surfacing aggregate material to tally construction of Hill City. AS 21602, asphalt concrete composite awarded to J&amp;J Asphalt of Rapid City, South Dakota. 201603, asphalt maintenance materials awarded to J&amp;J Asphalt of Rapid City. AS 216, 201604, precast concrete pipe and bridge products to be awarded to Cree Tech's Concrete Products of Rapid City. AS 201605, cutback and emulsified asphalt to be awarded to Hills Materials Company of Rapid City, South Dakota. 201606, de-icing sand to be awarded to Pete Lean and Sons of Rapid City, South Dakota. 201607, fencing to be awarded to Eminem Fencing of Rapid City, South Dakota. 201608, guard rail to be awarded to Hilt Construction of Rapid City, South Dakota. Magnesium chloride solution to be awarded to ZNS Dust Control Systems, Rapid City, South Dakota. Seeding, fertilizing, mulching, erosion control blanket to be awarded to Eminem Fencing of Rapid City, South Dakota. 2016, timber bridge materials to be awarded to Wheeler Lumber LLC of Whitewood, South Dakota. And 201612, traffic control materials to be awarded to Newman Signs of Jamestown, North Our recommendations are made on the basis of the lowest bid complying with bid documents, and copies of all these documents are on file at the Highway Department. Purchase of these items are as we need them and as approved by our 2016 budget. I am requesting a single motion from you to allow me to award these contracts for the items as noted.
I have a question, Tom.
Yes.
On pages 12 and 13, did you say Newman, Jamestown?
Yes, Newman Signs. We looked at the signs that we are going to be using and which ones come out the cheapest for us, they vary between the two contracts, and we looked at what we anticipate using this next year, and this is what was financially the best for us.
Heading on these that I see.
Oh, it says Lyles.
Talk about Lyles Signs.
That's another company that bid it. There are two companies that bid it, Lyles Signs and Newman Signs.
Where do we see Newman?
Newman, it starts on page 16.
Yeah, I just didn't go far enough. Okay, thank you.
They're 16 through 18, I think. Let me check to be sure. All the way through 19, 16 through 19.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I also see on tallies is getting their aggregate from the pearly pit.
Yeah, I know, they were the lowest that we had. So we couldn't, we couldn't deny it, but we'll see what happens in the next couple, next month.
So.
We may be buying from elsewhere, but we'll see what happens.
That's not my point. The pearly pit then is, there's tallies, there'll be Kroll, and then there'll be Hills all in the same pit?
Is it Hills or Pete Lean?
I can't, I don't remember which.
Hills material, it says, and then it says Pete Lean too, so we're getting three different companies, which I saw in there, the pearly pit is where we're getting, so only Kroll is the one that's expanding out there, not the other two.
That's the way I understand it. I'm not, I am not real familiar with everything that's going on out there.
Okay, I guess I'll look it up, but I didn't think about that. Okay, thank you, Tom.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the awarding of these contracts as listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, roll call.
Buscud?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes, motion carried. Item B.
Item B, our annual projects that we are letting. We attached tabulations for the items as bid on February 18th. We've reviewed the numbers and contracts to be awarded as follows. Recommendation, our basis on the lowest bid and copies of all these documents we have, these projects were all accounted for in our 2016 budget. I'm going to request a motion for each of these because they do amount to quite a bit. The first one, 2016 ADA Ramp Upgrades Valley, Rapid Valley Area, two bids were received, the lowest bidder was true form construction of Blackhawk to the amount of 185,973 dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion on the motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Tom, do we, do you ever have engineer's estimates in what these cost?
We try to estimate all of these, and of these, there was only one that came in over our budget, and that was the asphalt surface treatment. All the others, items, the seven, eight of these that I had, they all came in under, some of them significantly under our estimate.
I guess, from my point of view, I'd like to see the engineer's estimates when we get these quotes.
I'll make sure.
Danny, you don't have to today, but next. Now, Danny, you don't have to today, but next day.
Okay, I will make sure that we make note of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we, I chatted some with, I was superintendent about this the other day on the phone, and this is getting us, how many ramps?
I never got it from him this morning. He was trying to figure it out when I left this morning to come to the meeting. So we estimated around fifty to sixty of them, but I didn't have an exact number when I came to the meeting this morning.
So, yeah, let's say sixty, that'd be about three thousand per ramp?
Yeah, somewhere in that neighborhood. There's also sidewalk that attached to it. You gotta pay for the sidewalk to blend it in.
Unless we take the sidewalk out.
Well, we're not going to remove any sidewalk that's good.
Any idea at all what kind of traffic these ramps will get?
I couldn't tell you. They bury so much in the, in the valley.
There'd only be traffic counters for?
Not for pedestrians.[669.01][669.21](laughing)
Well, I've got to vote no on this, but, but go ahead.
Anything further? Roll call.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I have one. I have to agree with George that I would love to vote no on it, but I'm not sure that we have a choice. I suppose the government is going to make us do it.
This is trying to get caught up with the federal mandate that we got a couple, a year ago, two years ago. This is where we're trying to get them up to grade. Yes, this is part of that project.
And, Mr. Chair, sometimes we have to stand up to the government.
Mr. Chair.
Feds or not, we've got to stand up to them.
It'd be nice to stand up to it. I agree. I get frustrated because we're forced to do it, but I don't think we want the fines that they would fine us. This is much cheaper at this amount, roughly one hundred eighty-six thousand, to, to do than it would be for the fines that they will do. And then, again, we will be responsible if someone gets hurt. We can be sued for many things.
Due to a substandard ramp, we can get sued.
And, Mr. Chair, I thank you very much for that comment. This, this would come awful close to buying the Rochford Bridge, and one of these days, somebody's going to go through that bridge.
Well, Mr. Chair, it would have been nice if we'd have had a wheel tax to buy it, to fix that bridge, but now we don't.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion?
Consequences of actions.
Buscroot?
Aye.
Farabee?
No.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes, motion carried.
Next is the asphalt surface treatment project. Two bids were received. The low bid went to Hills Materials Company, Rapid City, for the amount of six hundred and three thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars and fifty cents.
Tom, where, where's this project at?
This is various roads throughout the county, most of it in the central portion of the county. There, we try to group them, but when we have a road that comes ready, we do it.
Thank you, sir.
Roughly how many, excuse me, roughly how many spots?
Um, there are, the list is three pages long.
Okay.
So the longest one being a couple miles, the shortest one being a couple hundred yards.
Thanks.
I'll move approval of AS, two thousand sixteen asphalt surface treatment project.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Roll call.
Buscroot?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Haddock?
Yes.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes, motion carried. Next.
Next is the asphalt surface crack sealing project. Four bids were received. The lowest bid was highway improvement of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, to the amount of two hundred eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. This is for various roads throughout the county.
Move approval of two thousand sixteen asphalt surface crack sealing projects.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Chair, we've, we've, we've identified those spots where we want the cracks sealed.
Yes. It's, the locations are as identified by my engineering staff.
Okay, thank you.
Any other remarks? Roll call.
Buscroot?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes, motion carried.
Next is aggregate hall and place project, Bigfoot Road and Canata Basin Road. We received three bids for this project. We are going to award it with alternative B, that, this is one that they use water in compaction of the material, to Western Construction of Rapid City, to the amount of three hundred and ten thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the awarding of AGG two one, two zero one six one, aggregate hall and place project for Bigfoot Road and Canata Basin Road.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Roll call.
Buscroot?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes, motion carried.
The next is aggregate stockpile project, Paulson Pit. This is to be awarded to, oh, yeah, this is to be awarded to Western Construction of Rapid City, the amount of seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the awarding of AGG two zero one six dash two, aggregate stockpile project, Paulson Pit, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Roll call.
Buscroot?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes, motion carried.
Next is BR five three oh three eight six dash sixteen, bridge replacement, Analog Creek Road. We received seven bids for this project. The, we are recommending to award it to Diamond Age Service LLC of Bowman, North Dakota, in the amount of sixty-five thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to award BR five three zero three eight six dash sixteen, bridge replacement on Analog Creek, Creek Road to Diamond Age Service.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
I would like to make a couple comments here. This was quite a bit below all the others. We'd looked into Diamond Age, and we feel they can do the job for us. This is just for the installation of the box units. We are buying the box units separate. There was question about the cost of that. The cost of the boxes are costing us fifty-two thousand seventy-four dollars, so.
Hey, any other questions or comments?
Well, Mr. Chair, I do, that's fifty-two thousand plus, we bought forty thousand for the engineering, correct?
I think it was thirty-something, yeah. You could use forty for a nice round number.
Sixty-five, so we're talking a hundred and, almost a hundred and sixty thousand.
Yes, and we estimated about two fifty.
And, and when they put the culverts in, that's filling in the re-graveling and, and all that business as well, that's.
We're doing the gravelling and the fencing ourselves.
We're doing all that.
We're doing the gravel and the fence.
They're just taking the culverts and the.
They're putting the culverts in and, and backfilling and everything.
Yeah, and, Mr. Chair, I, to me, it's from, from sixty-five eight, sixty-five, sixty-six thousand to, the high bid was a hundred and eighty-four.
That's correct.
That's a factor of almost three times, and that, that sure would make you pause for a little bit when you.
It made us stop and look and ask a lot of questions, because we have not worked with this company before, but in all of our conversations, they're a very reputable company, and I think they can do the job for us.
And, and then the rest of them are all, almost double.
Yep.
Hundred and fourteen, hundred and sixteen thousand, hundred and twenty-three, hundred and twenty-nine, hundred and seventy-four. They were all bidding the same thing.
That was one of the questions asked during the letting, but yes, this is a company that does a lot of work in the oil fields, and with the oil fields shutting down, they're looking for work. They're desperate for work, so they bid it very tight.
And in that vein, seven bidders, and this, this is just to stick these big culverts in the, and culverts are kind of new, right?
The box culverts, that, no, they've been around for years, but yeah, they've done, a lot of people have done them.
Well, maybe now's the time to, to be sticking a bunch of those in the, in the cricks. Thank you.
Anything further? Do we have a motion?
We had one.
We had one.
Yes, we do.
We had one.
Okay, then roll call.
Buscroot?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes, motion carried.
Excuse me. The last one is culvert replacement, Palmer Gulch Road. We received six bids on this project. We're recommending the, at, the award to Diamond Age Services of Bowman, North Dakota, the amount of forty-eight thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars.
Send me my motion.
Second.
Further discussion, okay, sorry.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
The further discussion on this, the cost of the box for us to buy these, these are a double fourteen by eight box culvert. The cost for us for these boxes is seventy-two thousand six hundred dollars. To supply the box is costing us more than to have them put it in.
So, Tom, this is going to solve the problem going across that area for these twelve people?
Boy, I hope so.[1310.81][1310.84](laughing)
But are these were fourteen by eight or twelve by eight?
Fourteen. These are fourteen by eight. I was wrong yesterday.
So how much is this project going to cost?
Well, seventy-two plus forty-eight, we're looking at a hundred and twenty, and another thirty for engineering. That'd be about a hundred fifty thousand.
Oh, no, I thought we spent two, a couple thousand on engineering.
Well, you figure the cost of what it would cost to do it, to hire somebody. We did the engineering in-house. I couldn't track exactly what we spent.
Okay.
But if I just look at it as if we hired it, this is what it would be worth, the engineering.
This is twelve people that were serving for a hundred fifty thousand dollar culvert.
That is correct.
Thank you.
And, just for the, while we're on this subject, the other day, it was by that area, and Sawmill has started some work on the creek. They've, they put in one crossover.
Sawmill is putting in two sections of pipe the same size as what we are, so hopefully everything will flow nicely when we get done.
So we're putting one hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred seventy-three dollar in ADA ramps all over Rapid Valley, and some people oppose that, but when you put in twelve people for a culvert of a hundred and twenty thousand, we're okay with that if it's in your district. I see.
Anything further?
Yes, sir, the, the ridge, the culverts might get some traffic.
What?
I say there might be some traffic on the bridge, on the culverts.
There won't be any on the sidewalks or any disabled people, George, using those ramps in Rapid Valley that have the same need. I disagree.
Okay, on the motion, on the motion. Roll call.
Buscroot?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
And then I will, I will thank the neighborhood for that.[1442.38][1442.91](laughing)
And guess what? It's ten-thirty, and planning and zoning is here.
Wow, we are on time. What's up with that, board?[1452.21][1452.24](laughing) That's amazing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
PJ Conover, Pentic County Planning Director. Item nineteen, items from planning and zoning. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and voted of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item A, first reading and public hearing of rezone sixteen oh one for Thomas and Janine Price. Recommend, recommendation is to continue to the April fifth, two thousand sixteen Board of Commissioners meeting with the applicant's concurrence. Item B, first reading and public hearing of rezone sixteen oh three and comprehensive plan amendment sixteen oh two for Mitch Morris. Recommended, recommendation is to continue to the April fifth, two thousand sixteen Board of Commissioners meeting with the applicant's concurrence. Item C, first reading and public hearing of rezone sixteen oh two and comprehensive plan amendment sixteen oh one for Kevin and Gail Tome, fiscal and surveying as the agent, and approval has been recommended.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed? If not, do we have a motion?
Move approval of the consent account under as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, roll call.
Buscroot?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Next item is item D.
Good morning, Brittany Molitor, Water Protection Coordinator. Item D is the stormwater management plan in the two thousand fifteen MS four annual report. Pennington County is required by the Environmental Protection Agency Stormwater Phase Two Rule to submit a MS four annual stormwater management report to the state of South Dakota. The stormwater Phase Two Rule applies to those areas within the county that are considered urbanized. There are three areas within the county that meet this criteria. Rapid Valley, which includes Green Valley, an area along Universal Drive, and an area in Colonial Pine Hills. These areas are outlined in Appendix A of our stormwater management plan. Pennington County Stormwater Management Plan was developed in two thousand three and provides the goals that the county defined at that time. The plan is updated every year to reflect any changes to the stormwater management program and any new goals. A lot of these new goals are either comments by the state or ones that we kind of see fit as we work through the program. The changes for two thousand sixteen are highlighted in red in your guys' packet. The MS four annual report is a report of the implementation and progress of this plan. Now, the report requires the board's approval prior to submission to the state of South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources. So staff's request is to approve the annual MS four report and the updated stormwater management plan and submit it to the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources. So entertain any questions anyone has?
Any questions for Brittany?
It's a lot of work, Brittany. (laughing) Well, we had some discussion on the ES, US, MS four, BMP, TMDLs yesterday, and I appreciate the staff listening to me. That was a lot of discussion. I don't always agree with the staff, but I always think they do a great job, so I want them to remember that, that they do what they're supposed to do. At some times, we're not always going to agree, but that doesn't mean I don't think they do a great job, so. Do we have to approve this?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make the approval of the annual MS four stormwater report and stormwater management plan.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a substitute motion to delay this meeting so I have time to study this document. It's been changed significantly from the last meeting and last year's report. And if you recall, last year.
So what is your substitute motion?
To delay.
Is there a second to the substitute motion?
I'll second if we're, if he needs more time to look at the manual.
Okay. We have a substitute motion and a second. Discussion on the substitute motion.
Brittany, is there any issue with delaying? Do we have to, is this a report that has to come in at a certain time? That's my only issue.
Um, the report has to be submitted to the state by March tenth, and I received this in February, so it gives me a short amount of time to actually update it and get it to the board for approval and submit it to the state.
So our next meeting is.
But is there specific questions or concerns? I guess that's my question that could be answered.
But I did get it read. I took the time as a commissioner to read it because we were discussing it today.
And this report was developed in two thousand nine, so some of these changes, the ones that are in red, are the ones that were updated for this year. So, you know, the structure and everything is pretty similar from year to year. There's not significant.
Right, I'm not in disagreement. And yes, I know more about TMDLs and BMP since this, and then Kroll, and then the Spring Creek. and then Kroll and then the Spring Creek. I could tell you everything that was in this part by any chance. But I'm also not opposed to someone that needs a little bit more time to read it. The main thing is, is if we don't get it in on time, that's the issue.
And last year was April, as I recall, and I think they're quite flexible on deadlines.
So we can still approve this, George, and then you could take your concerns to her, to Ms. Brittany, and then have a discussion with her.
The stormwater plan is a living document, so it can be changed at any time at the request of any of the commissioners if there's something that doesn't work in this document.
That's my point.
I thank you for your-
Any further discussion on the substitute motion?
I thank you for your second, and I'd appreciate your vote. I'd like to delay it until next meeting.
Okay, roll call on the substitute motion.
Busgrood?
No.
Farabee?
Yes.
Haddock?
No.
Troutman?
No.
Peterson?
No. Motion failed. Back to the original motion. Discussion on the original motion.
Commissioner Farabee, why I said no is that we can change it at any time, and I understand we have to get this in by the tenth. So with that in mind, that's why I did not motion to continue again because of the delay would put Brittany behind on getting this in by March tenth. And again, we can have those changes at any time.
Any other remarks?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Oh, excuse me. Go ahead.
I, I guess I've, my philosophy's always been to turn in the best product you can, and if it takes a little more time, then the person that, or the agency that requires the document should be gracious and give a little time, and I think they would. And in this vein, do, do you have the answer to the October thirty, two thousand fifteen letter from DNR that had some corrective actions required?
Yes, I did.
From last year's report?
Yes, I did. I sent her a corrective action report at the end of November, and it's incorporated in the plan. So do you have a specific question?
I would like to see the copy of what was submitted last fall.
In here?
It's not in here, but I mean, I can submit that or get that for him if that's what he'd like. But those changes and those corrective actions were addressed in the new stormwater plan. And I had submitted it to her at the end of November and didn't hear any feedback from her, so I'm assuming that they were, it was acceptable.
Mr. Chair, and part of that action, obviously, was to change the format some, and that's why I want time to study the new, I want to compare this, this document with last year's document to see what the differences are and, and seeing if we, if we solved the problem by merely rearranging things or we actually did something substantial and...
Any other remarks? Would you have a motion and a second? Roll call.
Busgrood?
Aye.
Farabee?
No.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next item is item E.
Item E is for a discussion and don't need any motions on this one. But essentially in our office, what we've come to notice is that solar energy systems, alternative energy systems are on the rise. We have a wind energy ordinance. What we don't have is a solar cellar or a voltake cell ordinance. And we actually met with some people from Colorado a little while ago that have thought, thought about doing a solar farm in Pennington County. They've asked us not to say who they are or where they're going to do it, but it is probably just under a section and a half in size. And we don't have anything in our ordinance that gives us any regulation over the installation of a solar farm or even installation of solar cells on people's properties if they are permanently attached to the ground. So what we're asking for is your approval to move ahead and start researching this. There are different cities and towns and counties in the state that have ordinances that are similar to this. We don't have anything in our ordinance that even touches this.
Mr. PJ, I think that would be appropriate based on a six-acre, one-megawatt cooperative solar farm with four hundred and, four thousand two hundred and eighty solar panels. We probably want to get ahead of this game.
Yes. This is just some examples of different types of solar farms that are out there and type of cells that are used.
Yep.
Mr. Chair?
That looks like a lake.
If, if you've seen those, they're quite overwhelming. And it just happened that the first one that I saw was when the sun was setting and it was blaring out onto the interstate. And it was causing for the drivers going a certain direction, an issue. So that, I think it's important for us. But I have some comments on, on how I think some of this should be done. I've been involved with electric co-ops. They are very well-versed in these kinds of alternative ways to generate electricity. I'm wondering if it wouldn't be sort of a good exercise to get some comments from both West River and Black Hills Co-op. I also think that another important part of a discussion about this type of, of energy is what it would or could do to Ellsworth Air Force Base and the FAA and if there are regulations there, but particularly Ellsworth, given that we have had to be careful with how tall our cell towers are and locations of the windmills and that sort of thing. I think they're very definitely a part of this discussion.
Okay.
So...
And the Developmental Authority as well, then?
Yes. That's who I was going to suggest. So I'm curious, are you thinking about having like a, a committee or bringing a group of people together to gather information before we start looking at what that, that whole, I just lost the word.
Well, the answer to your question, absolutely. Because the experts out there are not going to be, they're going to be the electric companies. Because there's a lot of possibilities of people selling the energy back to the, those companies. So I'd want them involved in discussions as well as being able to do maybe possibly a public meeting or two because these are, some of these are substantial in size.
Well, and it's not just solar, it's any kind of renewable energy. So maybe we want to consider that instead of just solar. Because it talks about in here, when you read the packet, it says local governments lacking information on the most effective strategies to increase, you know, eh, renewable energy may be tempted to leave solar considerations. But there's renewable energy besides solar that we might want to look into that. And then it also say, it says the researchers are NREL and they do education, income data, population, different stuff from state to state. So...
Also, Mr. Chair, I think one of the things that I think is really important in this is that we, we need to be sure that as hail breaks these panels and they age and they begin to look tacky, I, I think there needs to be some control of that because one of the observations when I saw these, these huge panel systems is that you could tell which ones had been put in first and which ones most recently because of the way they aged out. And, and I would hate to see them kind of fall apart. I have seen like some wind energy areas where they are old and they look awful. And I, I just think we need to control that part of it too.
Okay. Absolutely.
Thank you, PJ.
Mr. Chair, if I might, does it have any contact with the folks in Pier relative to the state of South Dakota looking at, at providing some kind of a framework for the counties?
We haven't done anything until you guys give us the go-ahead. We don't put too much effort into it until you, we get your approval to move forward.
My suggestion would be a sense of sixty-six counties and we're probably, what, one-fifty of the, of the land area in South Dakota that we ought to defer to Pier. And Pier ought to be giving them some guidance, some parameters from which to operate rather than us launching off by ourselves.
So PJ, renewable energy is wind farms too, sir, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am. We do have an ordinance for that.
Okay, that's why I said maybe we can incorporate renewable energy into one-
Into one section, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It's definitely in its infancy stages right now.
Thank you for bringing this up.
No problem. So, we okay with moving forward?
Take care of it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, the next item is item twenty A, and that is a discussion on the meeting format for the Kroll meeting that's to be held tomorrow afternoon. And in your packet you have a memorandum from Holly that lists a suggested meeting format. So, starting with that, everyone has that copy?
I have to use yours. I did something with mine.
You what?
I have to use yours. I did something with mine. I'll just look at yours at the same time, Commissioner.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Now, Mr. Chair?
So, go ahead.
I do have a question about one of these when it's appropriate. When we go through the public testimony and all of that, and then it says ending with board discussion and questions, when we go into that part, will we then have stopped any more discussion? You know, like if, if we're discussing how we want to go forward as a board, will that be the time when the people in the audience can, can no longer talk, that their, their chance to talk and, and give us all the information is prior to this, and then our discussion would be just among the board members?
It can be that if that's what you decide. Yes.
I would like to see that because I think we are going to need to gather lots of information and take a little time to figure it out. But I think we need the ability to speak among ourselves uninterrupted.
Commissioner Troutman, from what I have seen from three Walmarts on City Council and lots of public meetings, which I appreciated, in my experience, three minutes per speaker with a speaker request so that the chair can read through the names and not guess people just wanting to come up when they want. It keeps formality. You do opposing and...
Proposing, proponents.
Proponents and opponents, or however you say it. And then anybody that wanted to give their time to somebody else, maybe they, let's say, well, it's probably not going to be Kroll, it's going to be the other side. And they want to give, out of three minutes, they're giving fifteen minutes of five different people. We let people do that. And we let everybody talk that wanted to talk. And then we made sure that the whatever side, the Krolls, would be able to speak as long as we let the other side. That way we, we've got all sides covered. And you're fair, too. And you don't shut anybody down. Everybody gets to speak that wants to speak. And then after that, then their discussion is done, it goes to the board. And after that, the public at that point gave all their, whether it be Kroll or the neighbors or anybody else, they gave all their opinions and all their stuff, and then we say what we need to do next. So maybe somebody else would like to do it different, but it seemed to work really good that way. The public didn't feel shut down. Kroll didn't feel shut down, that they couldn't say everything they needed to say. And then we got to say and move forward to where we were going. But that's just what I've seen in a few discussions. So we can do what we want, but it's pretty simple.
From the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they were given three minutes. And I, I read an email later that contained the text of more details from someone who couldn't cover their whole comments in three minutes. And that made me wonder a little bit, looking forward on, on this particular meeting, whether, whether the three minutes should be expanded to five minutes. And as Commissioner Haddock said, when, if someone else wants to yield their time to a speaker, someone who is an orator may cover ten minutes, but using five minutes or whatever time we set per individual. And we know that there'd be a certain level of energy represented in the room. And sometimes when people have their adrenaline up, it's very frustrating to them to be cut off from saying everything they want to say. So in the interest of a good atmosphere, how do you want to do it?
Mr. Chair? Perhaps some of, I, I, one thing I noticed we didn't have on here, and, and it is standard procedure. You ask folks not to repeat what's already been said. And so I, I think that should be added there. And, you know, if someone is really talking and they're going over the three minutes, I, I think we should reserve the right to continue to hear them. You know?
Most of the time when people had three minutes, there wasn't very many over, I'll just tell you that. But if you don't set that time limit and they know that, then, and you let everybody do that, then you shouldn't set a time limit at all. And if they know they're going to go over and it's going to take six minutes or nine minutes, because most people know from their presentation, ahead of time, then they, someone should yield their time to them. But that's just what I've seen in practice before, and it seemed to have worked really well. And if you're over a couple seconds, most of the time if you say time, most people are like, okay. Because now they know.
Commissioner Busgrood, do you want to weigh in on this?
No, I'm, I'm satisfied with what Holly put out there. I guess, I, I kind of agree with Deb that if you start waiving some, one person to speak longer, pretty soon, why didn't I get to, why don't you waive my time? Why don't I get to speak longer? So I think you set a limit. I don't care if it's three or five, and that's what, that's what they got.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Farabee?
Mr. Chair, if, if we're going to have a hearing and, and for us, the five of us to make a decision, I think it ought to be as, as flexible as possible. And part of that flexibility is that the city's presenter, on issue, whatever, traffic, air quality, water, whatever the issue might be. I think it'd be beneficial for the, any of the five of us, if the speaker says something that prompts a question, that we ought to be able to ask that question at that time rather than wait five minutes or whatever. In that vein, that would take some of that speaker's time. So if we're going to have a full hearing to get the maximum input before we make a decision, I suggest the maximum flexibility and no time limits. And I'm saying the opposition, either side, proponent or opponent, ought to have whatever flexibility they need. If they want a speaker to speak for ten minutes on issue, that should be up to, to those folks, whether it's Kroll or the neighborhood or whoever. So I'm obviously opposed to three minute. And like I say, my main thing is that if a speaker says something that I want to ask a question of, right then is when it should be asked, and that would take away from that person's time. This is way different, totally different than the egg deal three years ago, four years ago. The board made that decision, the board was the opposition, so to speak. In this case, we are the referee. We're the one that has to make the decision. So I, I wouldn't compare this at all with the, with the egg thing three or four years ago.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You know, you brought, bring us hot to mind, George. We, we may need to do another meeting, I much say, you know? Because if there's a lot of questions of, on our part of the folks, I mean, is that something we're considering?
Well, I'll just answer George's question from being in there before. What happened- What happened was, let's say PJ is the audience, and he came up and he said stuff that George questioned. So, what George does is he writes everybody out there that he believes, or anything he believes on his paper that he needs to ask afterwards. That's his job. But to interrupt and not let both sides give their sides first and keep interrupting people in between, I think that doesn't work as well as if George or Nancy or Deb writes down what PJ said, bring PJ up, because then it's our turn to talk, and ask PJ directly, "PJ, can you come up, I do have a question on what you talked about earlier." It seems to be more constructive that way, because you got both sides. And then, we said, same way with Kroll, we'll bring Kroll up and do the same thing. We'll have all kinds of questions, and do we want to do that all then? Or do we want to take all our questions and then decide on both sides if we need to have another meeting? And/or specifically, take people's emails or whatever back? But I think the bottom line is if PJ, George, and Nancy out there are having questions that I want to ask afterwards, that's my right as a board.
That makes sense.
So, we might have, George might have 20 questions, you might have 10, Lyndell 30, and me 15. We all get to ask those questions, we just write them down per presenter or per person.
And, you know, Mr. Chair, I think that's a really good point, Deb, because I'm sitting here again thinking, well, you know, maybe PJ would bring up something, but then George would talk later and it would answer the question I have. And that would minimize the interruptions, you know, it makes sense.
And Kroll might come up on the second part and answer all the questions that we might be asking the people, or even the people asking us.
Sense.
So, some of that is counteracted by what they're saying, these guys are saying this, and now they've counteracted it, and we don't, you know, George's question might be irrelevant because Kroll answered it, or the neighbors might have already answered it by their three other people coming up. That's why I said, at the end, then you'll have your questions, because you won't have the same questions during, because other people will be answering them for you or have the facts.
Okay, that makes sense.
The one thought I have relative to asking a question while someone is making a presentation is that circumstances could be such that it became an argument between the questioner and the speaker. And to foster an atmosphere where you walk up to the podium, you say your name and you make your speech, and all of a sudden you're in a debate with someone sitting up here. Doesn't seem to me to be the most constructive situation that we could foster. But...
On the other hand, Mr. Chair, that's why we have a chair to intercede in those events. But the maximum, the maximum input, or the best situation for us, the five of us to make a decision, is maximum flexibility. And as soon as you put constraints, any kind of constraints on, other than the chair using his judgment, his or her judgment, that should be the only constraints required.
I disagree. If you get three minutes, you get to talk, and then your group gets to come up, because they usually have representatives, and they have someone at 15 minutes or someone at 20 minutes, George, nobody's cut off. And they don't feel cut off at that point, because if someone else already decided they wanted to represent them, they've got this all down. Then there's PJ and other people in their groups that aren't anything to do with those neighbors, but they're people that want to speak. They get their three minutes. Nobody's cut off, they get their maximum amount of time. Usually in three minutes, George, most people are going to say what they have to say. So, this meeting is about a hearing, and it's about hearing people. And then the second part is about hearing, once we listen to what they said, about what we think. And maybe at that time, we determine from all the information that we took today, because I believe you'll get the maximum amount of your thinking, nobody in the Walmart groups in three sets ever felt like they were cut off. Because they already had organized groups and non-organized groups, and they felt like they got their day in the sun at three minutes. Three minutes is a long time to talk. Plus...
Time.
Sorry. You're gonna, stop it now, I get five now.
Deb, you have never, you have never quit after three minutes.
And I'd get mad, and then we'd have problems, and then the chair would have to stop me again. But it worked that way, and like I said, I'll tell you, I don't think people are going to feel like they didn't get their time in the sun. So, whether you got, I think you'll have a message.
So, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we approve this special meeting format with the addition of a point that says to not repeat what has already been said.
So Nancy, they do have...
Could you, would you hold that?
Oh, okay.
For a little bit.
Okay.
I need to verify a little bit with Jay and PJ. It strikes me that at the beginning of the meeting, not only the ground rules, but there needs to be some framing of the purpose of the meeting and the potential action that's going to be taken. And I don't know if that's you, PJ, or not.
Jay.
Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. Excellent point, and we've actually talked about that. I think we would want to do that. And depending on the topic or the subject matter of that introduction, it might be PJ describing more of the literal, what the permit is, what are the pieces and parts of the permit. I might be more involved in the procedure and the taking of evidence and the marking of evidence, if there's documents, and the scope of the review. Those would be things more on the legal side for me to probably answer and lay out at the beginning. PJ would be the one more down in the grassroots, the details of what permit you're actually reviewing, and what are the pieces and parts of those permits, and questions about the site and the location and the zoning and those matters. I would leave and defer to PJ, because that's his area of expertise. But yes, I think at the beginning, absolutely, we'd be willing to do that.
So, folks that come in with information, we will want to have a copy of it and we'll have it as evidence or whatever, maybe that's not quite the right word.
You know, obviously, we're going to be recording everything. But as far as documentation, I would like to see any documentation, certainly that the commission has before them that's been reviewed to this point. And that includes documents that the Planning Commission reviewed, because remember, in the end, you're reviewing their work. And you're reviewing their perspective and what they looked at and what they considered in approving this construction permit. So, anything that was presented to the Planning Commission and what they considered should be a part of what goes into this set of records for your review. And then anything, if I'm a member of the public, I guess I come up and I have something I want to share with you that's relevant, and that's something more that I would talk about. That should be, if you're going to take that into consideration, that should be marked as well. And you end up with one full packet at the end that summarizes all of the material that you utilized to make your final decision in the case.
PJ, so ultimately, recognizing the fact that either party, if they're dissatisfied with the decision of this board, could take this matter further.
Correct.
And the material that you talked about would be considered in court if that's where they go next.
Right, yes.
And so, we would need a foundation for our ultimate decision, and that would be it.
And, you know, courts, we've been through this before. Courts understand that this is, in this particular case, you're like a quasi-judicial review board. They understand it's not something you do every day. All across the country, there's bodies just like you that don't perform court functions like a court does. But my experience has been the very much a desire for you to do it as controlled as you possibly can, so that if you have to review a recording, you can hear people talk and they're not talked over the top of. If there's documents, you consider that those are clearly marked as exhibits, so that a review board from this point on would know exactly what it is you utilized and relied on. I think we can accomplish those things, and that'll be our goal.
Thank you very much.
Here's my thing. When, we didn't limit discussion, though, George, meaning we didn't limit, if they wanted to talk about transportation on 507A, if they, on the permit, if they wanted to talk about the traffic study, the public is here. This is a meeting for the public to say the things, now, you can't talk about the Walmart here. I mean, none of us, that's irrelevant. But if you want to talk about the area or the traffic study and different stuff, I believe that's allowable. At the Planning Commission, we stuck to a certain erosion and sediment. 507A has air quality, it has stormwater, it has erosion. I think the traffic does play into part for health, safety, and welfare of people. So, I would say that when we do this discussion, we let the public discuss. We don't tell them that's irrelevant to what we're saying because it's not erosion and sediment control this time. We say, "Anything in 507A, construction permit, that's what this is about." And PJ, you did that, and I appreciate that. But that discussion goes into many things. Insurance bonds, different things like that. There's all kinds of different things, that aspects that this 507A relates to. So, let's remember that when they're discussing, let's listen to them. And they get three minutes each. And I think we'll have all kinds of really good information from people, whether it be the general public, the city, CVB, or anybody else. Tourism does play into this. Tourism is the number, agriculture and tourism is the two things in South Dakota. That should be discussed. So, just hopefully, we let that happen. And George, I believe in the limited discussion, I think all those parties should be able to speak on their behalf.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I might comment about the three minutes. How did that work, how well did that work during the Planning Commission meeting? You were, I think you were seated during the Planning Commission.
It limited it to 15 minutes, both groups, so the public was limited to discussion.
But eight presenter, how many presenters were hurried or cut off at the three-minute point?
I think they've organized better now.
Okay, let's, I'd like to go down the list on this memo. And yes or no, each one of them, just informally, so that we've got a guideline. But if I made a note on here and said, "We begin with the opening framing of the meeting with Jay and PJ," is that acceptable? If it is, I'll put it down.
Mr. Chair, if I might, you know, I was assigned a task of putting things together and before I was derailed, the one side pretty much insisted that the opening of this special session be by our planning department and our state's attorney. So, that was, at least one side said that quite strongly. So, yes.
That's right.
It ought to be, they ought to be opening by our planning department, you know, three to five minutes or whatever.
So, George...
And then followed by the state's attorney.
Chair, you tasked George to find the structure of this meeting. When you asked both sides, what did they say, George? Because you went to both sides.
It didn't fully get that accomplished, I got derailed. But, and I'll just be frank, and Kroll, Kroll wanted, that was my first contact. They wanted to, just as you laid out, Mr. Chair, that the planning department speak first, present first, and then the state's attorney.
Discuss, derailed, what do you mean, derailed?
My effort was derailed, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, let's go to three minutes. I personally would recommend five minutes. Do you object to five minutes per individual?
I'd have it open, but at least five, yes.
Anyone else?
We voting? We just...
I'll go with the five minutes.
Well, but let's go back to the opening first. Are we going to direct our staff to, and the state's attorney, to present first? Are we going to direct that at this point?
Yeah, we already decided that.
Well, I don't, do you have that direction?
Yes, that's my understanding, is that we're going to do that.
Okay.
As far as who goes first, if you said planning department and then state's attorney, that's fine with me.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's understood, then. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I ask is that you add Brittany Molitor to the introduction in the beginning as the person who's been closest involved in this.
In fact, in my opinion, it would be at your discretion as to who presented what.
Yep.
In that opening.
Yep.
The planning department, period. And the state's attorney could be the...
Two of you.
Could be the state's attorney who want to talk.
Okay.
Clear, thank you.
Any objection to five minutes?
Yes, we'll try it.
Anyone, what's your position on individual reserving the right to yield their time to another? Yes or no?
Yes.
I think that's fine, but where would we say that if the point has already been made by another speaker, then they should not get up and repeat and repeat and repeat?
I can tell you, you can say that, but it's going to be done. So, Nancy, I'm just, or Commissioner Troutman, I think you're just...
Well, it might be nice to say it, though.
But this is a meeting about them, so even if they repeat it, we need to listen again sometimes.
Assuming it's an organized effort, then the presenters should not be overlapping to any great extent, if it's an organized presentation.
Okay, do we or don't we want to let an individual yield? And this takes me back to, we are going to use a sign-up sheet. And if you said you cannot yield if you're not on the sign-up sheet.
I think that's right.
In other words, someone else who just spontaneously wants to let somebody else talk longer.
They have to be on the sign-up sheet, and you have to push, you put "Y," meaning yield, on theirs, and then they yield it, and then they're off the list.
Okay, are we okay with that?
Yeah.
And next item is no maximum time limit in total.
I agree.
Bring your own pillow.
Bring your food and your tent.
And speaker's sign-up sheet to be utilized, we've already touched on that.
Yep.
Equal time for opposition and support, including Kroll.
Yep.
Okay. Opposition to speak first, Kroll to finish with rebuttal. End with board, disclosed board discussion. Is that satisfactory? And we reserve the right to make a decision or continue at the end of this. Is that acceptable? Anything else that you want added to this procedure?
Food, just kidding. I said food, I'm decent.
Okay. Unless there's objections, this will be our format for tomorrow's meeting. And I'm going to recommend that this be prepared and printed up so people in the audience can have it as well and understand it accordingly. And if we're okay with that, we're done. Do we need to...
Mr. Chair, we should ask for public input.
Yes. Oh, there's a lady back there that wants.
Ms. Beth.
I'm not going to take my three minutes. Beth Mazzella, your point of Crowell speaking last, you said, and then rebuttal, will that be rebuttal for the neighbors and then rebuttal again? Or is that only Crowell's rebuttal? I just need clarification on that.
We can, I understand what you're saying in terms of each party having kind of an equal effort, and we will make sure both sides have rebuttal opportunities, unless the commission objects.
No, in fact, I would insist that whoever goes first should have at least, at least an opportunity to rebut what the second party had to say, that would be, I would insist on that.
Okay. Oh, excuse me.
Hi, Dan Richard. I would like to ask, and you're pretty eloquent when you want to be.
I don't want to.
That you just set the guidelines, and instead of saying you will only get five minutes, say, "Please hold your comments to three to five minutes." And you're pretty eloquent at doing that kind of stuff when you want to be. And also, keeping people on topic, you know, please, you know, if somebody's already said what you want to say, you know, and I think if you add, if you put on the paper, "Please keep your comments to three to five minutes," I think it would go over better than you are going to be limited to five minutes. Just an opinion.
A nice way to say it.
You're pretty eloquent yourself. Okay, thank you, Dan. Karen, do you need a motion to take care of this? We all understand it. Go ahead.
If I may, Jay Alderman with State's Attorney's Office, I just wanted to clarify, I guess, what is intended, what your concept of rebuttal is. I think the reference to Crowell rebuttal is the applicant having their opportunity to speak, obviously in favor as a proponent.
Right.
So what I was confused about, I just, maybe I'm the only one confused, is if everyone that comes up who speaks in opposition goes first, that's part of what it says there, then I'm assuming everyone who is a proponent goes second. Then everyone who spoke against it gets to go again and rebuttal? I just need clarification, so there isn't a lot of confusion tomorrow.
I was going to say something about that. What happens is, we still have another meeting on the fifteenth where they get to speak again anyway. So most of the time, if we decide to continue it because we didn't get enough information from one side or the other, I don't remember, as I recall, having to rebuttal afterwards. There was one side, everybody, it's a, it's a public hearing, everybody gets to speak on what they have to say. Crowell comes up and says their piece, we fathom that, we say, "Okay, we're going to move this forward to the fifteenth. We can have six more meetings, guys, if we still need more information or rebuttals off people."
Yeah, I think.
I'm going to agree with Jay. I haven't seen the rebuttal after the other side. I know it's nice to have everybody speak, but they're going to say everything they have to say, pretty much, that we need to hear, I believe, the first time, even if they agree with Crowell or not, which then I believe you're going to start some arguments without facts to back it up yet from this commission.
I think the reference, the use of the word rebuttal on your draft there was meant to just simply define that the applicant has an opportunity to speak as part of the proponents. And I don't think it was meant rebuttal as everybody can rebut one another one at a time and keep the thing going forever.
And they have a time limit, so.
That's a good clarification.
Mr. Chair, if I might, I think I can answer your question. I presume that to some extent, the neighborhood is organized to the point that one or two of the key people, if they have made notes on the presentation by Crowell, that they could share whatever points they have or clarifications with us. Not the entire, entire group of speakers, but at least one or two of the key people would be my thought.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
However, it's like going to committee meeting in peer. You get the opponents, the proponents, and then the committee speaks. And that's when the committee has the ability to say, "I don't understand what that study means," or "I need to get these facts." And we, as a board, would say what we need to know going forward to help us make a fair decision. And we are not going to, I don't see us coming to any kind of decision tomorrow, because there are so many things just in my mind that I want clarified. And the objective would be, after opponent, proponent, and then the board would make a list of things that we need to get true facts on, and how that worked, and understanding, and we would request those things. And until we actually have that, this back and forth isn't going to do anybody any good. We need, this is the start.
And Commissioner Troutman, I believe it's going to be a back and forth at that time, because what's going to happen is, we're going to get, you're right, both sides are going to come forward, and then I believe you're not, I believe, in my mind, we're not coming to a decision that day, because we're going to hear lots of information, and we're going to get lots of papers and different stuff, and I believe it's going to be continued. So I'll keep saying, there's more opportunity for people to speak and rebuttal, because if, just like us, I believe the public's going to listen and go, "Holy cow." And then they might not believe them or whatever, that's fine, but they can also bring that to us as well as a concern, because, like I said, I've never seen one public meeting make a decision right there and then what we're doing next. Because unless this Board of Commission is that informed on storm water and different things, which we are to a certain extent, we not, I don't know, I think it'll be carried on.
If I might, on that last thing that you mentioned, you talked about reserving your questions, so a speaker comes up here, rather than interrupting their three to five minute, you reserve your questions and you wait to the end of that speaker's time to ask them the question, you wait for the entire end. See, and that makes sense, because like you say, there will be certain questions of yours that would be answered as the process goes on. But like you said, Commissioner Troutman, at the end of, when you're done with the public testimony, and you've mentioned like a committee in peer, that's when committee members, as you recall, can call somebody back up.
That's what I was going to say.
And say, "You mentioned something, I have a question on that," and in essence, that's kind of their rebuttal. That's you calling them back up to get clarification on some matter.
And we are the final decision, so the rebuttal would be more on our side, because we would say, "Beth, could you come up here?" We, Nancy might say, and I might say, "Kyle, could you come up here on yours?" And then we'd get more information again. Because the public, whether, or Crowell, whether like what one side says or the other, whether it's fact or not, we are coming, this board is coming to that final decision. So you can counteract it, but they can also email us afterwards, too, so.
Mr. Chair, one more point. The way I see it, we actually have three factions, of Crowell and the neighborhood, and then the public at large. There may be one piece, maybe nobody, but there might be some public at large that really doesn't have a dog in a fight, so to speak. And they ought to have a chance to talk.
They do.
And at the end of the meeting, I would, I see the meeting, if I were setting it up, as the neighborhood and Crowell giving us as much information as they can to make the, have us make the decision in their favor. And then, then of course, it's up to us, but then at the end of that, then the true public comment, the true public.
So, Mr. Chair, I do not, I don't think you can limit this to neighborhood people, because this is a concern of the tourism industry, of the city of Rapid City. We've received several comments through emails and letters. So I don't, to me, there isn't the neighborhood, there's the proponents and opponents.
Commissioner, there, it's about what you just said, opponents and proponents, and whether that be proponents, people that are wanting to talk with Crowell, they get the same amount of time as the people that, it doesn't matter what side you're on, you're a proponent or opponent. There's not the neighborhood and Crowell. It's opponent or proponent, that's a funky name for me.
Okay.
It's not split, George, we're all the same.
Well, I totally disagree. There's three factions involved, and you're entitled to your opinion, obviously.
Thank you.
Anything further? Now, we'll go to item twenty-one. Thank you. Is Holly available?
Are we finished with, are we finished with item twenty?
What?
Item twenty, you got items from the commission, and I, all I wanted to say was that, and I previously talked about the sawmill and the work out there, I guess I'd invite all three of you, you had to get a chance to swing out and look at what's going on out there.
So we move on?
We're on twenty-one legislative session.
Yeah.
Same as the last couple of meetings, the updated bill list has been included in your packets for you. Couple of the main bills continually are being stalled and deferred over and over. I don't have anything specific for you, unless you guys have anything for me that you'd like additional information on.
I can tell you, I watched it on TV. I still had, by the time I was done watching, like thirty-five bills left, and that was the other day. Holy cow.
It's kind of crazy, they get to a certain point and say, "We're done."
Yep. It was like five thirty, six o'clock at night, I think I watched it for two hours and went, "Well, we thought ours was long."
Mr. Chair, I spoke quite passionately about SB three, and that has come out of the House Committee. It will be voted on sometime in the House floor. I checked last night, and it still was not scheduled. This is the most interesting thing. You talked to some of the people from the A Committee that pushed this through, and now they're saying, "Whoa, wait, we shouldn't be doing this." And I'm speaking of some of the equalization offices who have representation on that A Committee, and they voted for it in December, and now that's changing. So there's something going on now, I'm not real sure what. But there are a couple of people who were on that A Committee that do not believe this will come out of the House. I guess I just don't know what to think on this. It's a pretty crazy situation, and they keep deferring it. So, we'll see.
Thanks for keeping us updated, Ms. Holly. Absolutely. We do that a lot on a lot of things, thank you. And even listening meetings sometimes, which you really enjoy.
I do think one of the things we should comment on, though, is that they really have done a lot of, focusing on counties this year, and that hasn't not ever been. And I think that's a really good thing. We've gotten some good stuff going, and I don't know if that'll be carried on next year, if we don't get something done with a particular part of the process this year. But, you know, I think we have a good chance of changing that split on the alcohol tax. And the Appropriations Committee is looking at how they can fix that funding so that we can get part of it. So I, you know, those are some pretty interesting changes that we have not even had a chance at before. They haven't really cared that we're operating under old language, and we don't have authorization to come into the modern world with how we operate, what a language says. I mean, they haven't cared before. And so there are some good things happening there, even though we'd like to see some other things happen.
Okay, anything further on that? Committee reports. Does anyone have any committee reports? I would just mention that this Friday, eight-thirty, is our city-county monthly meeting. Sheridan Lake Road, future construction is on the agenda, three-mile jurisdiction, status of maps, identifying conflicting areas, Hawthorne Ditch, and some legislation, specifically Senate Bill eighty-four. And we normally have two commissioners there focused on the issues that are on the agenda. And Commissioner Farabee, Sheridan Lake Road is in your district, so if you can make it. And I would mention also that I had a conversation with Commissioner Heidi Gurken from Meade County. He's out in the Box Elder Creek drainage area. Mentioned these meetings to him, and he is the chair of the MPO group. And I did, took the liberty of inviting him to our meeting next Friday, so.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Mr. Chair.
That's here this time, right?
Yes, it is. Go ahead.
The Black Hills National Forest Advisory Board has been on hold for about three months, because every year, the Secretary of Agriculture needs to sign an authorization for you to serve on that board. And last year, we had our information in, in May, hoping to give them plenty of time, and for several months, it's just sat on his desk. Well, he finally signed everything. So we're actually going to be able to function again and work on trying to maintain some healthy forest initiatives to move forward. So that'll be starting up again in just a couple of weeks.
Also, the other day, I'm on the drug and alcohol board and with the programs. I actually went to the DUI court at ten o'clock in the morning. I don't know if you've ever been to one, but Judge Brown was there. And that was the most eye-opening experience. At first, I thought the man had lost his mind, how he was talking to one of the people. And then to watch him in action, because at first, you're just dumbfounded, thinking, "Wow, that man is just crazy," which he probably is anyway, but that's a good thing. And he's telling a guy what's up. Then he goes through about twelve or fifteen others, and he's amazing. He changes your whole outlook from the beginning to listen to him, because it didn't matter, the diversity in that room was many, rich, poor, native, black, whatever, it didn't matter. He talked to everybody the same. It was amazing. And so afterwards, of course, I walked up to him, and people know me good enough, I said, "You're crazy, sir," and he looked at me and started smiling. And I said, "At first, I thought you were not a nice name." And then after that, I said, "Then I watched you, you're the most compassionate person I've ever seen, that actually, when you talk to people, you were real."
person I've ever seen, that actually, when you talk to people, you were real. And I loved it. So if you have a chance, this public has a chance, they're really doing some amazing programs. And the sheriff's office, the deputies, Willie, the judges, our state's attorneys, they're doing amazing work in that department. And the caring spirit of those people, if you haven't seen Pennington County at its best, you need to go. Because it was awesome. So thank you to all the people in those programs that helped because it's a lot of work and they're, they're making progress. So, awesome.
Any other committee reports? Items from the public? Anyone from the public that wishes to address the board?
Yes, I, I'm Rex Conrad, and I guess I don't have any one particular interest. I've been attending your county commission meetings here, I think the last four or five. And I, I, I just, I was kind, kind of wanted to get involved with, with what's going on here. And I just, an observation I've, that I've come up with as far as after the, the wheel tax vote that we voted no on, it didn't seem to have any effect, or I don't know how, it didn't really stick, I guess, with you as far as commission goes. I guess what I took it to mean was that, you know, we were unhappy with the way you guys were spending. And it doesn't seem to me, from my observations from sitting here, it hasn't made any difference whatsoever as far as it didn't stick with you guys. You're looking at it that, that we were just a bunch of misinformed people on this, and we didn't vote properly the way that you wanted it. But I haven't seen any bit of difference as far as the message we were trying to send to you folks on voting no on the wheel tax. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good morning. My name is Bert Mason. I live up in Rocher. I do have Hill City address. I received this letter on Saturday concerning a fence that, by the way, twice this board of commissioners told me I could put up, I was given permission to put it up. Now I'm given 14 days to take it down. I'm willing to take it down, but you need to move part of your roads if I can move my fence.
Yes.
Mr. Busch, I don't even remember who you are not. My name is Bert Mason from Rochford. And like I said, this is 20 years ago this started, and you've been involved in it from the start. Originally, I bought a store in Rochford, a little half acre. At one point, I decided I should put a gas station. Before I even started anything, I came down and talked to your planning and zoning about everything, trying to make sure I was jumped through all your hoops. Jumped through all the hoops, you know, cost me a lot of money. Even when I got to that point, it took me two years. But to, to get the business in, I actually bought a little over half an acre, and the little piece of property that you're looking at was combined so that I could have the acre to put the gas station in. Well, due to a flood, I took it out. But just let me back up. Sorry, I'm a little, little nervous.
You're okay.
If you're looking at that, down there, there was a drainage, and there was no parking there where they were talking about. I spent thousands and thousands of dollars to put this parking area in. Once I closed the store, I put a fence up on my property line. There were so many hit and runs and so many people going through my property because there's no law enforcement in Rochford, even though I do pay taxes for it. Upon one point, the gentleman took out most of my fence. Then he ended up committing suicide the next week in the bar. So there's no way for me to go back to get him. So I came down to this committee, talked to you, and you said, put your fence up right along the outside, wherever you put your parking. So I did that. A couple of years later, a gentleman came, took down all that fence, came back, came down here, talked to you folks about it. You said, go ahead and put your fence back up. Law enforcement came up, talked to the neighbor, told him if he comes on my property, he'll immediately be arrested. But at that time, I felt a little guilty about the community hall because the community hall has no parking. Parking's really an issue in Rochford. So I actually left some of my parking lot open at that time so the community hall could have some parking. Now comes this letter, I'm not sure why it came. Well, I guess I shouldn't. One of your employees stopped and said, somebody complained about the one parking spot, which I paid to put there. But I do want to comply. I will take my fence out. But if you look towards the north, there's that section that's 88 feet by 89. It's right there on the road right away. I need to put some fence right there, but you have about three foot of your roadway on my property, and I would like you to move that so I can put my fence there. Point two, and you go to the left, there's kind of like a little diamond there. The post office has their mailbox cluster right over that corner. If you could have them move that so I could get that post in. And last but not least, I did pay for that entire parking lot. I put everything in there. Can you see where the road is? And there's that open spot. I paid to have that all built and filled in. I will be pulling out all my culverts, taking out all that dirt, and there will be no more parking left there. The only question I do have left is where would you like me to put my access so I can safely get in and out of my property? Because there are times, since, once again, there's no law enforcement, and you have things like the Mickelson Trail, there'll be several thousand people in Rochford. There's no law enforcement, nobody doing anything. I'll come home from work and I can't even get into my property. I put up no trespassing signs. Please let me in. People take them off. I guess I'd just like to know what you folks would like to do at this point. Are you going to take two weeks and remove your asphalt from my property so I can put my fence there? Or where are we going from here, folks? Everything I've done on this property, I've come down here to you folks and done it. At one point, you told me you had to move my house. Charged me an extra $1,000. Because I actually, everything down there in that section, I paid to have it surveyed, not once, but not twice. I'm sorry, I don't mean to get so upset, but this has been 20 years of this. I want to get done with it. I'm actually going to move out of town. I'd like to turn this into a vacation property and move to Lawrence County. Rochford is not a nice place to live unless you're an alcoholic and like to drive home. That's the other thing I'd like to bring up as long as I'm here. Do you know, there's only six people who live in Rochford, and we have two bars? There's not one place to stay in Rochford. And every one of those customers that's supporting it, apparently they can make a living, they're driving home. And I realize now, everybody drives and drunks, but when you have that many people, a few of them are a little intoxicated. And you never do a, an alcohol stop coming this way, it's always going that way. I guess that's what all I have to say. I'd just like to know what you, you have to say. You're going to?
Sir, the public comment period is, is one where you can address this board, but we have to have items on the agenda so the public knows it's being addressed. And so you, what you've said will be taken into consideration, but there can be no action on it today whatsoever.
Well, I just wanted to bring it up today because I got this on Saturday. I have two weeks to take those posts out. And I will take them out, but I'm going to start digging that roadway out also, because that is my property and I do have property rights. I did ask, the guy came up and did some surveying, and that's another point of contention. I talked to him, told him what's going on. Well, why don't you have your boss come out here and talk to me about it? Maybe we can settle this peacefully. Well, apparently government isn't open. They'd rather go behind your back and do things. Sorry to say that, but sometimes it feels like it. When will I be able to know if you're going to move your roadway up there off my property so I can put those fence posts in that you're telling me that I have two weeks to take off?
We can't give you a date right now. The highway superintendent will be the one that can do that.
Okay. And when can I expect to hear from him? It just seems to me you're sending this letter, do you mind, from, I know it's not you, and I know what you're saying. But I get this letter from the county saying, I've got to do this in two weeks. Now you're telling me that I can't get an answer from you until after I have all of this done? Do I need to, I'm just wondering what my next step is. Do I, do I need to get legal representation, go talk to Civil Liberties Union? Because at this point, all this parking, because it is over parking, and once again, because north of that, I've already given you folks so much property. You took out your right of way going north. I was not compensated for it. You said, oh, it's the cost of doing business.
Mr. Chair, I'll talk to highway superintendent.
Jay.
Jay.
Jay Alderman with State's Attorney's Office. As you described, Commissioner Peterson, you can't take action today, but you could put this on the agenda for the next meeting, which I believe is the 15th.
Yep.
And have whoever from Pennington County government that's been involved in this appear to answer some obvious questions I suppose you might have at this point and to address this issue. The highway department, I don't know if planning and zoning has been involved with this in any fashion.
Bert, we need your phone number, sir. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, this is my district, and I'll talk to the highway superintendent.
I think we all will. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Any other items from the public? Not, do we need executive session? Then, do we have any other motions?
How about a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn?
That was quick.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Busch, Rud?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?